The meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is here except for Mrs. Louise Jackson, who is absent this evening.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, we will recognize the National Merit Semifinalists. Dr. Ferris.
Good evening. Dr. Barrisford, members of the board. It is with great pleasure and pride we are here to present the Carmel High School class of 2025 National Merit Semifinalist 2U. Each year, over 1.5 million juniors take the preliminary SAT, which qualifies them for consideration in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Of these 1.5 million students, less than 1% are recognized as National Merit Semifinalists as a result of their score on the PSAT. Once named semifinalists, these students are invited to apply for finalist status and compete for one of 2,500 scholarships worth $2,500 each. Semifinalists who earn finalist status are also considered for corporate scholarships and merit scholarships at their chosen colleges and universities. Carmel High School is ecstatic and excited to announce that 45 current seniors have been named National Merit Semifinalists. During the month of September, these 45 seniors, along with their CHS counselors, worked to complete the application for finalist consideration. This extensive application process provided more in-depth information about these very talented and multifaceted students, including academic and extracurricular accomplishments, a student essay, and a counselor letter. These seniors will learn of their status as a finalist in late January and whether they have been awarded scholarships throughout the entire spring semester. At this time, I would like to invite Melinda Stephan to present our class of 2025 Carmel High School National Merit Semifinalist.
Dr. Barrisford and members of the board and families and students, it's my pleasure to present to you our 2025 National Merit Semifinalist students. When I call your name, please come forward, shake hands, get your certificate. We'll do the Carmel clap. Keep it quick and we want to recognize everybody. Stay up front so that we can all see your lovely faces and also get a picture of you at the end of the recognition. All right? All right. Nicholas Anderson.
Rebecca Bellinger.
Shreech Chakravartula.
Aditya Chathri.
Gavin Chen.
Matthew Dung.
Ruth Dirksen.
Jessica Ding.
Michael Fortuna.
Gideon Goldstein.
Alexander Hyder.
Isaiah Henderson.
Christopher Herzog.
Juwan Coother.
Anna Liao.
Ava Luo.
Adam Madney.
Timothy Mariano.
Dr. Barrisford and members of the board and families and students, it's my pleasure to present to you our 2025 National Merit Semifinalist students. When I call your name, please come forward, shake hands, get your certificate. We'll do the Carmel clap. Keep it quick and we want to recognize everybody. Stay up front so that we can all see your lovely faces and also get a picture of you at the end of the recognition. All right? All right. Nicholas Anderson.
Rebecca Ballinger.
Shreech Chakravartula.
Aditya Chathri.
Gavin Chen.
Matthew Dung.
Ruth Dirksen.
Jessica Ding.
Michael Fortuna.
Gideon Goldstein.
Helen Gong.
Alexander Hyder.
Isaiah Henderson.
Christopher Herzog.
David Jiang.
Noah Khan.
Juwan Coother.
Anna Liao.
Angelina Liu.
Ava Luo.
Adam Madney.
Timothy Mariano.
Leah McKay.
Edward Meng.
Darcy Moffett.
Grace Nia.
Suhana Nishkaran.
Ariel Nusa Fazzo.
Ashley Paul.
Julia Pang.
Anthony Pha.
Brian Pha.
Musa Pitney.
Michael Chen.
Kelly Shi.
Ayush Singh.
Alex Song.
Justin Tang.
Cole Turbush.
Samuel Bertis Marsh.
Noah Yun.
Ethan Zen.
Ivy Zen.
Grace Tseng.
Please join me in congratulating our 2025 National Merit Semifinalists.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I was kind of.
We will take a brief break. For those of you who want to stay for the rest of the meeting, go ahead and stay. And it is a school night, so if you need to leave, you can take pictures out in the foyer. Per Board bylaw, speakers will be placed in Group One and Group Two. Group One are CCS students, CCS parents and guardians, employees, and Carmel residents. This evening, we have two public speakers for comment that are both in that Group One. So they will be placed in or have been already placed in our fancy bingo ball machine. Thank you, Dr. O'Stryke. And so I have an order. But before we determine that or before I let you know who goes first and then second, I want to remind you that participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the board. No person may address or question individual board members. The school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during public comment, but will take them under advisement. So the numbers for our speakers were placed in the bingo basket. And so we have determined an order. First up is David Meisenhelder. And then on deck second is Bruce Helt. And as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. You have the timer up there on the board and then you will have a reminder on there on the platform. First up again is David Meisenhelder.
Thank you very much. My name is David Meisenhelder. What else was required other than the name?
That's it.
That's it? All right. All three of my children graduated from Carmel High School many years ago. And first of all, I'd like to thank all the board members for their time. It can be a thankless job at times and unrewarding at times. I would like to know more about the decision as it relates to Orchard Park Elementary School and whether or not there was a cost-benefit analysis done on keeping that school. And my primary reason for asking that is that there continues to be referendums, it seems, each cycle, asking for more and more money for what appears to be not going toward teacher salaries and student services, but more about monument building and kind of gilded facilities. And I'm just curious why the need to keep Orchard Park Elementary when it seems like you could have sold that piece of property and therefore curtailed the need for future referendum and adding to the tax burden of those citizens that don't currently have students at CCS but continue to pay taxes. And I would just, again, I'd like to find out whether or not there was a cost-benefit analysis done and if so, by whom, and whether or not that'll be made a public record for review. That's the purpose of my public comment.
Thank you. Up next is Bruce Helt.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Bruce Helt. I'm a 38-year resident of Carmel with two sons that went through Carmel schools. I'm here tonight to talk about fiscal responsibility, which I personally feel has been lacking with the current school board. But before I do that, I want to say a few things about myself, so this will make a little more sense to you. For starters, I've served on five boards here in Carmel. The Carmel Dads Club Board, the Carmel Parks Board, after being appointed by Mayor Brainerd, and three HOA boards within the city. I'm retired now after 45 years in sales, including the last 24 years in athletic sales. I sold about $250 million worth of products around the state of Indiana, including $2 million to Carmel Clay Schools. I've attended over 40 school board meetings in Indiana, so I know what you people go through and I appreciate what you do. I know it's not an easy thing to do. My point here is I've been in your shoes and I understand what it means to serve on a board like this, which includes a fiduciary responsibility to your constituents. One thing I never forgot while serving on those boards was that I represented the people that elected me or appointed me, not the other way around. Another thing that jumped out at me was, after attending your September 25th board meeting, was the bundling of five elementary school projects into one and then voting on it with minimal discussion. On any of the boards I served on, we never bundled projects like that together, regardless of the amount. In other words, we didn't spend, move $60,000 from a pool renovation over to a clubhouse remodeling project. If that was a time-saving technique, I'd encourage your board to, at the very least, take a few minutes to discuss those elementary school projects individually. And how do you approve moving money from one project to another after that project was completed? Perhaps a separated, a separate dedicated budget finance committee would be a good idea for the board, similar to what I've experienced with other boards. Also, I've been perplexed by Carmel School Board's procurement model, which includes routinely using Fannie Howie Architects and Skillman as your construction manager, which are probably the two most expensive in their field in the state of Indiana. I know other corporations near us use them and we have to keep up with the Joneses, but spending upwards of $18 million on an indoor turf practice field is a lot of money for that type of building. I sold 50 similar field houses like that and in my professional opinion, that could have been done for about $5 or $6 million less. I think it's great that Carmel High School has the fourth nicest indoor turf facility in the Midwest, behind Ohio State. in the Midwest, behind Ohio State, Notre Dame in Michigan, and it's being used for other sports cheerleading and band, but it was cost to the taxpayers. Don't ever forget that 25% of Carmel is now over the age of 50, and there's at least 25,000 retired people living in Carmel. I figured the school system gets 42% of my property taxes, so I know for a fact that I've spent, I've contributed over $90,000 to the corporation. With that, and in closing, I hope you Board members and future, any future members, will be more fiscally responsible with the taxpayer of Carmel's money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everyone who came out for public comment. Next on our agenda is consent. And our consent agenda tonight includes our personnel report, payroll, gift applications, the September 9th workshop session minutes, the September 25th regular session minutes, the September 30th executive session minutes, and the September 30th workshop session minutes. And a reminder for those of you, if you have not attended one of our meetings, our consent items are those, part of our business, part of the meeting, sort of why the School Board is here, why we meet, because we need to approve payroll claims and other reports. Do I have a motion to approve those consent items? Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Any discussion? Right, seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, I would like a motion to suspend the regular Board meeting, and we will open a public hearing on the appropriation of proceeds of the General Obligation Bonds Series 2024. May I have a motion to suspend the regular Board meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Per Board Policy 0167.3, when a public hearing is required by federal or state statute, the same rules followed during public comment apply during a public hearing with the following exceptions: advanced registration is not required, and speakers must speak on the topic of the public hearing. Before speaking, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation if applicable. As with other public comment, participants will have three minutes to speak. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the Board. No person may address or question individual Board members. The School Board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during the public hearing, but will take them under advisement. Mr. McMichael, do you have anything to comment?
I do. The purpose of this public hearing is to offer opportunity for comment relative to appropriation. This is the second step in a bond sale process in that appropriation, this is approving the appropriation in order to be able to actually use the bond proceeds. And so that's the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. At this time, I will offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding the plan. Since there are no comments, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. All in favor? Thank you. We will now resume our regular Board meeting. Our next part of our meeting is our action items. And our first action item is the resolution authorizing issuance of General Obligation Bonds Series 2024. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is the resolution that authorizes the administration to proceed to take the next steps in selling a bond issue. And so essentially, this resolution is saying that the Boards determine the need to do that in order to provide funding for the purpose of this bond issue, which was discussed at the previous meeting. And so, again, this is the next step in the process.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of General Obligation Bonds Series 2024?
So moved.
Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is the resolution approving additional appropriation for General Obligation Bonds Series 2024. Mr. McMichael.
So the Board having given opportunity for the public to comment on the consideration of this resolution, this is actually the Board taking action to approve the additional appropriation, which again is the next step necessary in order to go through the bonding process.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to approve the resolution approving additional appropriation for General Obligation Bonds Series 2024?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is the adoption of the 2025 Budgets, Capital Projects Plan, and Bus Replacement Plan. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is the third and final step in culminating in the Board, adopting a budget as well as adopting a bus replacement plan and a capital projects plan. And so we would recommend that you approve those recommendations to adopt the 25 Budget, the Capital Projects Plan, and the Bus Replacement Plan.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the 2025 Budgets, Capital Projects Plan, and Bus Replacement Plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Any, sorry, I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? Go ahead, Katie.
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. McMichael, and your staff for answering all of our questions. I also want to thank you for meeting with us additionally. Two of us met with you each on Friday to go through things again. I appreciate the time that your team has given us. I also want to kind of, a little bit of perspective too, is that I'm very thankful that the budget isn't just one time a year, it's all year. I appreciate your monthly financial updates where we can look at those key metrics such as revenue expenditures and cash balances, and then when we are passing different things that come across our desk that regard finances, that end up making the budget later on, that you answer a lot of our nitty-gritty questions. So, and we ask a lot. So thank you so much to your team for really kind of digging in there and getting the information that we need. I just want you to know that we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yep, thank you. You know, it's a pretty ominous thing to approve about a quarter of a billion-dollar budget, so I think we all take it seriously. But I wanted to just say a few words that, you know, School Boards govern and oversee the school district through its sole employee, the Superintendent, Dr. Beresford, who's effectively our CEO of the district. And I believe the review and adoption of the district's budgets, a key element of the role. I put a lot of time into reviewing and asking questions of the various budget documents that are provided by the administration. Many of my questions are raised and answered over the course of the budget adoption process, which for the Board started September 9th. I very much appreciate the assistance I've received from the administration, particularly Roger McMichael and his staff. He's been in this position in Carmel literally for decades, I think over 30 years. And I, his excellence and mastery of this role is evident in how well our district's financially managed. So I want to thank you, Roger, and your staff. I believe that all my budget questions led to a budget preparation informational meeting that Katie mentioned that we had the end of last week, put on by the administration for each one of the Board members. I know that I learned a lot more about the uniqueness and challenges that are evident in preparing the CCS budget, and I suspect that my colleagues too were appreciative, as Katie said. I have heard that the Board needs to trust the administration and let them do their jobs. And although I agree that we need to both trust and allow them to do their jobs, we also need to provide oversight and governance. Trust is to be earned and not simply granted. This requires the asking of probing questions and verification. If we do not do this, then I must ask, we must ask ourselves, what is the purpose of the Board? Looking ahead to our next budget cycle, I believe that we need to look at the budget process for opportunities that enable the Board to add more value and have more visibility to the challenges that the administration has with allocating resources. For example, I would like to see us establish key performance indicators, KPIs, that allow us to track our important goals. We've discussed this in the past, and I know that Louise, who's not here tonight, has made this point as well. And one such KPI could be classroom sizes. We do get monthly enrollment reports that give us the average classroom size for kindergarten through fifth grade, but what is our target? If we want to reduce classroom size, what would we have to give up, for example? And how are we doing with the middle schools? We have no visibility to the classroom sizes that I've seen. And this is a common KPI that I have been seeing tracked at other districts such as Zionsville. Given that the budget we are being asked to review and adopt is effectively the result of decisions made in the past, such as teacher contracts, this is something I learned the other day, I appreciate that, I suggest that there may be other points in time where we should look at our spending priorities. Therefore, I look forward to taking a new look at how the Board operates next year with goals and key performance indicators for the district. And I believe Christian sees this also as an opportunity for us next year. But after reviewing the 2025 budget and receiving answers to most of my questions, reviewing the monthly financial reports, as Katie mentioned, and seeing that our expenditures are tracking well within last year's budget, I can support the adoption of our 2025 budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, did you have anything? No. I just, again, I wanted to reiterate what both Greg and Katie said, that I know you've spent a lot of time answering all of our questions for Greg and I over the past two years and for Katie for eight years. And then Friday, you took the time to meet with a couple of us at a time and really delve into the meat of the budget and how it starts and when it starts. And so we, it, I felt like I had a really good grasp of the budget, and I left with an even more, even better grasp. And so really appreciate you taking the time to do that.
I appreciate your comments, but I want to emphasize that, you know, I get paid to do this, and I appreciate that you are also taking time and not getting paid to take your job very seriously, and I do appreciate that, and I'm sure the community does as well.
Thank you. We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is a resolution to transfer from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund. Mr. McMichael.
Yes, this transfer is necessary as a result of the state several years ago changed the funds. They did not change the way the money flows into the funds. And so essentially what happened is, is the, when the new Education Fund was created, to a great extent replacing the General Fund, it was, the use of the Education Fund is much narrower than the previous General Fund and does not include operational expenses, everything from utilities to custodial expenses. It's really focused on, in the school, in the classroom expenses, which is why 96% of it is sovereign benefits, and the vast majority of that are teachers or instructional assistants and so forth that support teachers in the classroom. But because the money continues to come to the Education Fund, and we're required to move about $18 million of expenses to the Operations Fund, it's necessary to, since you have to pay the expenses of the Operations Fund, and the money provided for it at that moment is in the Education Fund, it's necessary to do a transfer, and that's all this is, really. It's just the money following the expense. It has nothing to do with, you know, changing of the expenses, it's where it's, what fund it's paid from.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to approve the resolution to transfer from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund?
So moved.
Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? Greg?
Just a comment, and this is adding on to what you said, Roger. We'll be doing this for some period of time until things could change.
Yeah, it really is, just becomes really a routine that's been necessary since the state changed the funding, the different funds, they consolidated funds and so forth. And so, once a year, we do this, we will do this process, and that's what we're doing now for the 25 budget, to get prepared for that budget.
And the benefit of it is when we see reporting on like Indiana's Gateway site, we see expenditures in the proper fund, otherwise it gets confusing. We've seen like a, I think one was a building maintenance fee in the Education Fund, and that's not where it belongs, but this cleans that up, so I think it's a good move.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the resolution for transfer of funds to the Rainy Day Fund. Mr. McMichael.
Yes, and this, as the Board knows, two or three, three years ago probably, we had a stated goal of increasing our total reserves or cash balance. And so within the Education Fund, the Operating Referendum Fund, and the Rainy Day Fund, all three of those funds for reserve purposes are considered, you know, standard and pores, for example, when we do sell bond issues and they're considering our rating and our financial stability, they're looking at all three funds. And so the objective was to increase, really increase the minimum reserve balance over time from 8% to closer to 12%. And so that's what this is doing, and we're proposing to transfer $3 million from the Operations Fund to the Rainy Day Fund. And I'd emphasize that this transfer is for reserves, it's not for identified expenses or certainly not recurring expenses, because by definition, it's like your savings account, it's an accumulation of funds to that 12% level as a part of financial management, to have reserves in place, just as you would have a savings account in the event that something happened to your yearly, you know, income stream.
Thank you for the explanation. May I have a motion to approve the resolution to transfer of funds to the Rainy Day Fund? Thank you, Greg. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion? Greg?
Yeah, okay, I guess I caught my eye. Roger, do you know like how many more transfers it'll take to get to the 12% target?
I don't know exactly, but we anticipate this transfer, I think there will likely be at least one or two more. We're getting close to the 12%.
I just wanted to thank you for the explanation for, I think, most of us that are laypeople and not a financial person, that it is like a savings account for the school, which, you know, as any other business or person gives you a better rating when you're needing to borrow or for that, those other sorts of matters.
Well, we do have the highest rating in the state, I'm just saying.
Jennifer?
And I know that we do ask the same questions very frequently, twice a month, every time we go over these things, but I, and I appreciate your patience as you answer them over and over. Certainly, everyone who operates their own personal finances, their own business, understands that contingencies or things pop up all the time during the pandemic when we needed to provide more Chromebooks and more assistance to families so that they would be able to have the technology at home and be prepared for e-learning, things like that happen. But because we are committed to keeping these rainy day funds at a healthy percentage, we're able to weather those situations. In addition, we're able to have the highest bond rating. And so I appreciate your oversight in that, and that is why we're so happy to have you here, Roger. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is the 2025, or 2026 Program of Study Course Change Our next action item is the 2025, or 2026 program of study course changes. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So, next month, our high school students will actually start planning for next year, where they will, we start scheduling for the 25, 26 school year in November. And the first step to that is to revise our program of studies for next year. And as I brought to you last month, our program of studies, we are, we are offering 28 new courses and then several modifications and a few deletions to the program of studies for our students. And this increases their opportunities in departments such as math, English, world language, science, physical education, business, family and consumer science, just to name a few. We're always looking at how we can have the most rigorous courses for the options for our students and for our students that also relate to their interests. And so, we're excited to present these new courses for this program of studies. And I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Koke.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 program of study course changes? Thank you, Katie. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? Katie?
Talking about repeating comments and things, the program of study course changes are probably one of my favorite things to vote on, because I think it's so exciting to see what our students have. This past Saturday, my daughter's a junior at Carmel High School and is in the Polytechnic EMT pathway, and she had the incredible opportunity with that to go, and she gets clinical hours. So she got to have an eight-hour shift on an ambulance. The opportunities that these kids have, I mean, it's just incredible when she's, you know, she leaves and my little baby, and she's got her stethoscope and her tacked-up pants and her boots, and she goes off into the world. And it's, when she comes back, just the energy and the light in her eyes and how, you know, it's one of those things where she's going to know really quickly if she wants to go in medicine or not. You know, the things that she gets to see and the people she works with. And it's such incredible opportunities that we're giving our children to be able to really at a young age, kind of cross some things off the list or to, you know, put them in bold and underlined. So I think it's just so amazing that we have it. And as a parent, I am extremely thankful that our kids have those opportunities.
Yes, and I would agree. I think it is so important, not only to find out what your passions are and what you're interested in, sometimes to find out what you're not interested in. And to figure that out while you're still in high school before you go to a four-year degree or something else and spend a lot of time and money.
I appreciate too, it seems like, I know one of the additions is the aviation, and I know that was in part due to requests from, from family, from the community. So I appreciate that you also listen to our community and our CCS parents as to what they want to see.
Yes, and at our career fair last week, we actually had a flight simulator where students had the opportunity to land a plane, which was, and Dr. Ferris shared with me that he did not do very well at landing the plane.
As one who became a pilot in high school, I think that that's a great career path. I know that my niece, who transferred from a smaller school to Carmel last year, really was, was hesitant at first, but now she's amazed at all the opportunities that she's been able to afford herself of this past year before college and had just really given her some insights into, just as you said, things that she liked and pathways that she was very excited about and now realizes that they may not play to her strengths. So it is a wonderful way, especially in our state, that is looking to strengthen that study-to-work program, that we have all these opportunities available to our students. Thank you.
Is that everybody?
Yeah, just a quick question. So we talked about this a bit last time when we were reviewing this proposal, which we're going to vote on in a minute. So, the next step would be to start looking at curriculum for these, some of these classes?
Correct, yes. For the new courses, we'll work to develop the curriculum and then we'll move into the materials adoption to support that curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have change orders. We have the change orders for the Carmel High School Polytech addition.
Madam Secretary, I'd like to make a motion to take change orders 6.7, 6.8, 6.9, 6.10, and 6.11 together as one action item.
Do I have a second?
I was talking to all of you. So now I just need a second.
Can I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, the only discussion I have, we heard a comment a few minutes ago, coincidentally enough, that when we do that, it does get us through those change orders quicker and we have an opportunity to discuss them. But if, if we take, if somebody wants to vote no on one of them, then no would have to apply to all of them. And that's, I'm not saying that I'm going to vote no on anything, but I don't necessarily agree that's the best practice. I think we have time to go through them all, and so, that's my comment on that.
These, one of the things that we did talk about in our budget meetings, was these were, these are all programs and renovations and work that we have already approved. So a small change order that is maybe affecting them, it's not like we're going to leave these projects undone. So, to me, it seems relevant to just take them all together since we have people in place and people who are working on these projects that we have approved, so we show our trust in. And then these are projects that we've already said we want to have finished, and so the small change order, and with any project that anybody ever builds, there's always some sort of a contingency or change. So I would move to take them all together.
I'm sorry, if all board members are inclined to approve the change orders, then it would be my intent, maybe this is kind of the middle ground, that I'll still comment on, briefly at least, on the change orders, certainly the larger ones. And on the other hand, if there's, if you feel like you can't be comfortable or you're not comfortable voting, then, then I would recommend you would take them individually. But otherwise, I think you probably satisfy both desires by, because I'll still make comments on each.
I do. I think the entire board would enjoy hearing comments on, on all five change orders.
Right. I just want to make the point that if, when it comes time to take the vote, we're really just, we're saving time instead of voting five times. We'll vote one time to approve, and if someone took issue with one of them, if you wanted to vote no on it, you're in, you're going on record as not approving any of them. All we're doing is saving some board time, so I just don't think it's the best practice.
And I think in the future, the board can have a discussion beforehand on items that are questionable, if any board members think maybe I don't want to, you know, I don't want to approve this or I'm unsure, we could talk about that beforehand.
That'd probably be a good approach.
So all in favor of having change orders 6.7, 6.8, 6.9, 6.10, and 6.11 grouped together? All in favor?
Aye.
This time?
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. McMichael, so, there are five of them.
Thank you. I'll start with, they're not necessarily in the order that they're in the report, but there's $114,000 change order for the Polytech project, and it has to do with replacing a rooftop unit. The unit that's providing conditioning for that space in a part of that facility, we thought we'd be able to use the existing unit, but it was sufficient, it made enough noise and there were some leaks that developed, and so we elected, felt it was in the best interest to replace it. So that's essentially what that change order is. It's a mechanical, part of the mechanical system. There's a small $2,600 change order at the South Support Building, and it's actually a deduct change order, which, if I have to pick, I'd rather have it reduced rather than increased. And, but then the second large one is a cherry tree for the modulators. And we've discussed this previously, the board knows that the modulators were actually given to us from another school district. And so, this, this is $228,000, and it's essentially the last piece of cost in order to set those up. And so, so this is referred to as general trades, but essentially site work, it's sidewalks, it's utilities, because these units have restrooms, so we have to run utilities to them. And all of that, though, was, was money much better spent for this rather than leasing very basic portables, which we don't call them portables, we call them cottages.
Those are academic suites.
Oh, they keep changing it on me. Academic suites, yes. And then there's a small one for Creekside Middle, $16,000. The city requires, they, they must approve the bike racks, for example, and the number of them, and we needed more bike racks than what was originally anticipated. So this is a concrete pad to put the racks on. And then finally, there's a deduct change order, about $81,000 at the Naddatorium, and that's because we used a different contractor than originally had that portion of the work in order to complete certain concrete work on the North and East Drives so that they would be completed prior to school. And I think that's it.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve that group of change orders? It is 6.7, 6.8, 6.9, 6.10, and 6.11?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. And then discussion.
Question I tend to ask a lot, too, I didn't see it in the wording here, but I'm assuming these are all within our budget, that's been approved for these projects, these changes, just things that come up unplanned and typical.
They are. We, of course, in large projects, we always have contingency allowances and, you know, the intent is, is that you're much better off to have a little leftover than to not have enough to do, you know, when you have unforeseen circumstance. So a little bit like a cash balance. But to answer your question, yes, we wouldn't bring a project to, or change order to you if we hadn't, you know, didn't have, hadn't sorted out the funding. And if we didn't have funding available to pay for it, we wouldn't, because we're essentially giving a contract to somebody. So it'd be like, we wouldn't give somebody, we wouldn't ask you to approve it, and we certainly wouldn't give a contract that we didn't know where, how we're going to pay for it. So, it's always, that's always the approach.
I don't know that we've addressed this. The infrastructure that we're putting in place for the Cherry Tree academic suites, is that infrastructure, does it stay there? Are we then responsible for removing it all? The water lines, the sidewalks?
I don't know specifically. Of course, the water lines, for example, I don't know if it'd be a matter of removing. It could be, more likely, I would guess, that they would be capped off. There could be sidewalk that, we would certainly intend, best we could, if we could, if we were putting a sidewalk in, we would, if it was at all possible to assume it would remain and be useful for the project, of course, we'd leave it in. And that's probably the case in this case as well.
And we didn't infringe upon the playground or a facility that we were already using?
Not with the modulators, but as you can imagine, there is a certain amount of disruption when you're doing a project this size. And as it relates to playgrounds, we're also doing work on the softball complexes for the high school, actually, it's not, it's on that property, but it's the high school complex. And, and so there, there's some fencing and so forth to be sure that from a safety standpoint that that, that the kids are safe. So, so that, I wouldn't say it, it doesn't necessarily infringe on the playground, but like the path to where you're going is longer than it would be otherwise, because you have to go around certain areas too. But I wouldn't say, I don't feel it's significant, we're not doing anything that's significantly impeding the use of the playground.
Do you think all of that would have been much more had we had to lease slash purchase academic suites?
I do, but, but more importantly than, you know, not to minimize the money, but we were going to have four individual, what do we call them? Academic suites. But, but those would-
I think those would have been trailers.
They might have been portals, because they, basically just four independent units, no restrooms, which implies back and forth in the building, still, you know, half a million dollars, so we're sensitive to how much things do cost. And what we ended up with was spending about the same amount of money to utilize these, and there's seven of them altogether, which, and it significantly includes restrooms and contained hallways. So instead of accessing each room from outside like you would a mobile home, there's, there's an interior hallway that, like a, you know, a school building that has class, has these classrooms off of it. And then there's a couple of rooms that we didn't need for the grade level, but they're certainly beneficial to, for, you know, meetings and different things that they, that you would imagine the entire fourth grade would make use of. They certainly don't have a pod to go out to, for example, but they can utilize some of the other space. So, and then finally, we will move these and use them at Smokey Row Elementary. That project's essentially the same footprint and was a little newer, so we'll, we plan on that project in 2026. So, especially because we have two schools, not just one, we, financially, this was a real benefit for us.
Thank you for those explanations. Great. I'm going to read all the names of them before we vote. So, all those in favor of change order 6.7, which is the Carmel High School Polytech addition, 6.8 Carmel High School Football Stadium, South Support Building, 6.9 Cherry Tree Elementary renovations, 6.10 Creekside Middle School and West Clay Elementary Site renovations, and 6.11 Carmel High School Naddatorium addition and existing Naddatorium renovations. So all in favor of those change orders? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item, our next part of our agenda is our discussion. And first on our discussion is the 2025 school board meeting dates. I know Colleen has worked very hard and, and some on the board, we have looked at these dates for quite a while in making sure that we have our meetings not on any scheduled holidays, major holidays.
We're sharing our screen, that's why we're waiting, sorry.
It will be up there in just one second for you to have a, take a look at. And then this will be up in board docs and, or on our board website, once we approve it. So this-
Before the next week?
Before the next week, okay. So this will be up for you to view before our next meeting. This evening is just the discussion portion where we're just sharing it with the public, and then any discussion from the board on dates. Katie?
I just want to appreciate the time that went into looking at these dates. I know it's really hard to schedule around lots of different things, but I do appreciate that when it could conflict with a holiday or a celebration, that we did designate that we would not do any student recognition those nights. So we may still have to have our business meeting, but we wouldn't have students and their families come in on those particular evenings.
Thank you. And again, that will be posted on the CCS website, on the board's portion of the website prior to our next meeting. Our next discussion item is the first reading of policy 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So from time to time, the board receives proposals to name or rename portions of facilities in Carmel Clay Schools. And the board has received a proposal to rename a portion of a facility at Carmel High School. And as we were reviewing the policy that was first adopted in 1999, it was determined that there needed to be some changes to that policy. And so, we prepared those changes and shared those with the policy committee, and then thus for the board for discussion this evening.
Thank you. Any discussion on these?
Yeah, just a clarification, if I'm, you know, reading it right, it looks like it was written more for employees, retirees, and now it's being enhanced so we could have students or alumni that have done something remarkable. Is that the gist of the change? Am I right with that?
So, it was, it was, it was always written with those- So it, it was, it was, it was always written with those employees or even those alumni as well. It just, it's the wording of it and the amount of time in looking at making significant contributions to either the school district or can, significant contributions in their practices that they look at. So the alumni piece was an additional piece to that, yes.
Great, thanks.
Katie?
And I, what I would like to, I was just gonna name some examples, because I think that's really great for those in our audience of like what this would be. Some examples are like the Dale Graham Auditorium, the Robert Hartman Baseball Field, Eric Clark Activity Center, the Jim Moore Auditorium at Collegewood Elementary. So those are the things that we're talking about a little bit, where it's like, you know, something's being named for behalf of somebody.
Right. And most recently, I believe, a few years ago, we have the Mark Weaver Woods, yes.
I just want to make sure I clarify, because one of the things I love, Mr. McMichael, is that we don't have like ABC Bank football field. Like, we don't do corporate sponsorships and things, so this isn't really what we're talking about here.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. Next on our agenda is reports, and we will begin our reports with a staff and student services and student day report. Dr. Osteik and Dr. Dudley.
Good evening, President Koke, Dr. Bearsford, and members of the board. Tonight, we're gonna present to you a combined report with Dr. Dudley and myself on the Orchard Park Vision. And so during the past five years as Assistant Superintendent here in Carmel, I've followed the litigation surrounding Orchard Park. I'm aware that the district had previously shared we were considering a new EduCare site at Orchard Park before everything was placed on hold due to that pending litigation. However, I do believe that there's a bigger picture envisioned to utilize the Orchard Park property that benefits our students and families here specifically in Carmel. As your next superintendent, I want to be a part of this great community for the next fifteen to twenty years. During this time, I believe that the state will fund early childhood preschool in some form or fashion, and we must plan now for the future. When we look to our north, Westfield has a new early learning center, and they are currently adding on to their building due to the increasing need for preschool in their community. To the south, we have Washington Township that has a brand-new early learning center, and they have had their program for many years. A new early learning center is a missing piece for our district, and I would love to see us invest in our preschool children here in Carmel. Each year, we hear about the importance of early childhood learning as a pathway to improve academic outcomes. And Carmel currently provides a special education preschool at five separate elementary schools within the district. A new early learning center at Orchard Park would fulfill the need we have in our community, bringing together our students to also interact with their typical peers and create an enriched learning opportunity that will aim to improve academic outcomes for our students here within the Carmel community. This vision aligns with the feedback our district received from the Orchard Park and Home Place community back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. At this time, I'd like for Ms. Mary Podney, our early childhood coordinator, to share our vision for Orchard Park and what possibilities exist as we, as we continue to plan for the future of Carmel Clay Schools. Mrs. Podney.
Good evening. First of all, yes, I'm, I'm the early childhood coordinator. And those board members that were here a couple of years ago, I promise we're not gonna do any yoga tonight, so you get to stay safely in your seats. Thank you for inviting me tonight to talk a little bit about early learning in Carmel. I thought the best place to start would be to talk about our current programs. Dr. O kind of mentioned that quickly, but what do we currently offer our youngest learners? And we have kind of two different ways in which we're meeting those needs. The first one is EduCare, which is employee childcare for kids who are aged six weeks to five years. You have to be a full-time employee in order to access that, and we have that at two sites. It's at Carmel Middle School and Clay Middle School, and they currently serve about two hundred, just over two hundred children. The cost for employees ranges from two hundred and two dollars to two hundred seventy-eight dollars, just based on the age of the child, when the children are six weeks. We have much lower ratios, and so there's a higher cost. And currently, we have a hundred and fifty-three students on the waitlist. One hundred of those students are waiting for a spot this year, which means like they would take a spot if it opened up this year. Fifty-three are already on that waitlist for next year, and many of those one hundred students that are on this year's waitlist will roll over to next year as well. So a hundred and fifty-three total students if we're looking at like the waitlist for next year. In addition to that, we have the program that I oversee, which is our developmental preschool and pre-K. We provide special education services for students who are ages three through five before they can enter kindergarten. We have that at five elementary school sites, and we currently have just over two hundred students as well. Our special education services include speech, occupational, and physical therapy, and all of the students in our program have gone through an educational evaluation, which means they have qualified for special education and have an IEP or an individualized education plan. My program is free for parents because it is part of this child's free and appropriate public education. They're just accessing their public school education a couple of years earlier due to the needs of their child. So what do we know about early learning? We know that experts tell us ninety percent of all brain development occurs by age five. If we don't begin thinking about education in the early years, our children are at risk of falling behind by the time they start kindergarten. Just ask any kindergarten teacher, and within the first two weeks of school, they can tell you which children have had some type of early learning experience and which ones have not. And so as we look at Orchard Park, it could be an early learning center. If we, if it were to be that, it could help us with our EduCare students who are on that waitlist, hopefully to open up enough classrooms that we would not have a waitlist anymore. It would consolidate all of the developmental preschools into one location. And then, as Dr. O alluded to, if Indiana were to provide additional funding for community pre-K and preschool opportunities, it would serve the needs of our Carmel students and our community right there, and it would be built for children in those age ranges. So early childhood looks very different than elementary education, and our little people need to be able to move, they need to see things out there that are built for them so that they can access them. They are curious, they are hands-on, and so I did visit our, the Westfield facility. And then I also went online and looked up just what is best practice in, in early learning right now when we look at building design and what children need to access that environment. These are just some pictures that show, you can see the table is low, the sink is low. This would be like an art area that kids could go, they can get messy, do the creative, meet their creative early learning standards. This would be maybe like a li-, the one on the left would be like a library. Again, everything is at the children's level, books would be displayed right where they can see them. The windows are deep so that they can see outside. And then also playgrounds. So when we look at early learning standards, Indiana has two different sections. We have gross motor and fine motor, as well as social engagement and play standards. And so a playground is a great way to work on those gross motor skills, allow the students to explore, be curious, have different types of, you can see there's turf, there's like the, the poured rubber, there's a pathway there, lots of different colors. Here's another example of another playground. I was talking with our blind low-vision teacher about some of our current playgrounds, and she was talking about how they're all the same color. And so that's really hard for our students that might have a, a vision deficit, and they are, the different colors would allow them to see where the texture changes so that they know if it's a step up or a step down. Again, these are just some examples of what it could be. One of the things I personally like is like this one is on the inside of the building, so the building was built around it. So super, super safe for our little learners, they're all completely contained. And then what benefits does this give our community? So as I mentioned before, it would meet the childcare need for all of our staff. It would increase collaboration for developmental preschool teachers. So right now, I have two teachers at five sites, at each of the five sites. It would bring us all together to be able to collaborate, provide that professional development that is targeted for early childhood teachers, therapists, and assistants. So same thing, I've got occupational therapists and physical therapists who are meeting the needs, a wider range of needs, whereas if we had one site, they would, you know, have specialized professional development, just about working with three- to five-year-olds. It would give an enhanced ability to integrate those into the day, so those therapists, the, the speech therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy could be more integrated because those professionals would be there in the building and be dedicated solely to early childhood. And it would increase our access to typically developing peers. So the developmental preschool classrooms, all the students in there have some type of special education need. So they have an IEP, and it's really hard to get typical peers, partially due to the length of day and just the, the parent has, the, the things that the parent has to do. Whereas if we were housed at an EduCare site, we would be able to integrate peers from our EduCare into our developmental preschool. The benefits of a peer, it's gonna provide a really great peer model for behavior, for social engagement, for oral language development, how you make friends. It's, there's a lot of research about the positive impact that peers can have for kids with special needs. And then also, it would increase the ability to balance classroom needs and numbers. So right now, I've got five sites, and they're spread up amongst, in the district. But, you know, one year, maybe the west side has a whole bunch of kids that are turning three. And so my sites at Clay Center and Smokey Row have really high numbers just because, I don't know, maybe there's a new neighborhood or something that causes that influx. And we have a feeder system set up because we do provide transportation for my developmental preschool kids. Whereas if we are all in one site, I could spread that amongst those classrooms, just looking purely at class numbers. And the same thing with needs. Some of the kids that we, we get into our program have a lot of needs. And right now, with our, the way it's set up, I have two classrooms to put them in, depending on where they are, you know, districted to. Whereas if I had all of the classrooms in one building, I could more easily balance those needs across the classrooms and be more intentional with the groups of kids that we have in each classroom. With that, we'll open it up for questions and feedback.
So with that, thank you, Mrs. Podney. With that, we- We do receive monthly inquiries, and had an inquiry this evening, additionally from our Orchard Park and Home Place community about the Orchard Park property, including inquiries from our board. And as your next superintendent, I believe it's time to share our vision for this property with our community as this land will serve as a, serve a very important purpose with educating our Carmel children in the future. And so with that, we'd be happy to take any questions. Katie, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
President Koke.
Thank you so much.
First of all, so excited, so excited. I have been involved in this from the very beginning, from when we had to make the hard decisions to, to close the elementary school, to build the new ones. I've talked with lots and lots of parents, and really kind of the resounding is, if it must be done, we just want to make sure that this, this area, this building is, is for the future of Carmel Clay Schools. And I'm so excited to see this. I know this is a vision, which means there's, this is only the one of a thousand more discussions to have, and that there's not gonna be a lot of details, and we're not gonna be able to really kind of dive into the minutia. But I just want you to know that I appreciate you sharing with the board, I appreciate you sharing with the community. I know that they have been anxiously waiting as much as we have to be able to kind of move forward to those next steps. So thank you so much for this. This is very exciting and personal for me, as I will be kind of going off of, of the board, but to know that this is something that is kind of been on that open-to-do list forever for me, and so I'm really excited about this. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I was just listening to a podcast that said early learning is one of the key indicators to future success. And so I understand how important that is. As a working mother, when I went back to work at four weeks, it was very scary looking for childcare and trying to find the right place and having to go outside my community to find that. And especially as a working mother, if I were working in a, in a school, in a district, in a company where I knew the people who were performing that care, it would alleviate a lot of stress and then allow me to do my best work. I like the vision and how it supports our teachers and our community, and I think it fits very nicely with the mayor's new task force on affordable housing and encouraging young families to come into our community. If we allow Washington Township and Westfield to have a program that we don't prioritize, and it's something that's that important to the development of our younger people, then I think we are doing our community a complete disservice that will definitely show headquarters and families that this is not a welcoming community for the young families. And I think that's the exact opposite of the message that we would like to send. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some questions, and it's, is, I think Katie mentioned it, we may be early for expecting answers, but it is exciting, and I've tutored for a few years little ones, little kindergartners, and I could see the differences in, in where they were, those that had preschooling and those that didn't. And I think it's a huge advantage, like everybody's been talking about here. Do, do you know yet if the plan would be to replace the building?
That would be the plan, to replace the building so that we can create those spaces for our youngest learners as Mrs. Podney shared in the pictures.
Okay. And I'm not sure I understood the, the comments on the transportation would, do we envision that we would have transportation from across all of Carmel into this site? Or would parents and guardians be required to bring the kids in?
Yeah, because it's a centralized location in the district, it serves as a really great property for us to have an early learning center. Currently, and Mrs. Podney can probably speak to it a little bit, but currently, we do have buses for our special education preschool students that the buses bring them in, and then they come in for their time, and then the buses take them home, yes.
Yes, so special education students are entitled to that transportation. For the EduCare students, transportation is not included. The parents bring them in in the morning, and then they pick them up in the afternoon. And so transportation is not included with our current EduCare students.
So, so have we looked at, you know, Carmel's like something like fifty square miles, it's just huge territory. Have we looked at doing something like, but with more strategically-placed campuses, like on the west side and the center and the east, and as opposed to one central for the, the large, you know, the largeness of the city?
So if early childhood was mandated, absolutely, we'd be looking at different sites throughout the district. However, this would get us started as we plan for the future, give us that blueprint that we could take to other sites. And if there is a need, and, and that need continues to grow, we know there's a need in the community right now, but if that need continues to grow, absolutely, we would look at other sites in the district.
Well, and you can see that if it's mandatory for four-year-olds, you know, in round numbers, there's about a thousand, roughly a thousand kids per, per age level, or normally grade level. So if you, if you had a thousand plus the five, almost five hundred we already have, or more than, you know, and it may be more than that, you're probably looking at fifteen to two thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand kids. So depending how big you wanted a facility, you, you certainly need two sites minimum, but more likely three or four, which also would be good for the community and certainly the parents, because you wouldn't have the transportation distances and so forth. It's really like the, the, a plus with the, with the current program for early childhood from a logistical standpoint is within the four quadrants, you know, we try to have you, although it doesn't always work, as Mary said, but, but you may have, you may, if you're on the northwest side, you may go to, you know, Smokey Row rather than all the way over here to Cherry Tree. And so, so the more locations we had, it would, logistically, it would benefit everybody.
So what would be the next steps at this point?
So next steps, we just wanted to share our vision with the board this evening. Next steps would be to, if the board were interested in moving forward, would be to figure out what the project may entail, pulling together all of the information, including costs, and starting that process as we would with constructing any new building in the district.
I'm going last because I'm really excited. Everyone here knows, because I talk about it a lot, I'm a speech therapist and I worked in special education for 21 years. Starting, I worked in, when I actually moved here 20 years ago, I worked in a developmental preschool. And it was a really cool situation up in Kokomo, where there was a lot of counties that came together. And I learned the, the real benefit of that. As a speech therapist, we had speech and PT and OT and the developmental, the teachers all in the same building. And the, I learned more in those four years probably than I maybe have since, just from those awesome therapists and teachers. But I think too, not only the special education piece, which obviously speaks to my heart, but the, the piece of, I know in the past, we've all as a board talked, several of the board members have brought up the, you know, seeing a gap in, or maybe a gap in achievement between schools. And offering early childhood education can, and, and we know there's, there's tons of research, all you have to do is put it into Google, that one way to bridge that gap is by offering early childhood education. And so I really think that this is, I can see the vision that you're looking into the future of Carmel, not necessarily just only right now, but what we also may need in the future. And just for, and you could probably go more into this, but just for, so that people don't, who may not know special education and IDA, and that, if you could just speak on when kids are three, when they qualify for an IEP, that we are, we are required to provide services?
Yeah, yeah. Most of our kids come from first steps, so these are kids that are getting first steps from birth to age three. And then when they turn three, or actually about six months before they turn three, the law says that first steps has to connect them with me. And then I talk about our services and we have to do that evaluation to complete it by the time they turn three, so that on the day they turn three, there are services in place and ready to go. And yes, it's part of special education law. And then it's part of child find is, and so then the other side of that is building connections with preschools and physicians' offices, pediatricians' offices around in the area to also let them know if they've got a child that's over the age of three, not in first steps, but they have concerns or the child's maybe not successful in their setting, to refer them to us, and then we do that evaluation. So my numbers do go up all year long because kids turn three all year long.
Thank you, because I don't, I don't know if everybody understands that, that requirement, that we, that we do have to provide that. And then I just had one more question that I know is, it seems like just in the short time I've been on the board, that we've been having to kind of retrofit or create new early childhood classrooms. Am I correct on that? And you don't see that stopping anytime soon?
Well, you're, you are correct. Woodbrook was, we most recently added two classrooms there, which is, that made our fifth site. We had four since 2005, I believe. So yes, it's, it's, I think we start, I kind of remember when there was about 50 kids. Now, as noted, there's over 200.
Yeah, this is one of our fastest-growing populations in the district over the last couple, three years.
Thank you for that. And I know, Jennifer, you alluded to what the mayor's kind of been doing. I know I have been talking to some of the people who are the members of the mayor's disability council, and I think that they would be heartened to know that this would be something that Carmel would be able to, to offer. All right, thank you very much. We get to follow that up with the monthly financial update.
So, and Gris, and that, I'm not quite ready here, so hold on.
In a minute, we will see the monthly financial update. It will be up there on the screen for you.
I'm getting really good at this, must say. Okay, maybe not that good, but. Okay, so, we're through September, and so, see our education operating referendum and our rainy day funds. I'll go to the, the, okay. There we go. I'll go to the cash balance and, and for September in these funds, and it's $12.4 million. You'll note that we compare that to last year, although it's not always a direct comparison, but you can see it's like $6 million. And you might ask, how did it double so fast? And, and the answer is, is because this, the current fund, we, we transferred or increased the rainy day fund, as we talked about a little bit earlier, $2.4 million. And significantly, the transfers that we also talked about, we, we do the transfers twice a year, June and then in December, and the transfers, that, that amount of money is, is just under 1.5 million. So if you, and so that, this will catch up with itself. In other words, when, when we take money out of the education fund, move it to the operating fund, you'll see it, see a similar picture on the receiving end with regard to the operating fund. So, so when you, when you, when you adjust for those two differences, then it's more like 6 million in one year and 6.8 in the other year. So, so we're right on about where we would expect. We, we expect to increase a little bit over time because our budgets get larger, so that 12% as it, from a dollar standpoint, gets larger. But it's really, it's tracking right where we would have expected it to. In our operating referendum, we're at negative 3.5 this year. And you'll see last year, we were negative 1.2. But again, when you, when you, in this case, when you adjust about 4.4 million for, when that transfer occurs in December, then it, then it will bounce that out. And in fact, we're, we're a couple million dollar, will be a, you know, a couple million dollars higher, as comparably speaking, which is what's enabling us also, remember, to make that transfer from this fund to the rainy day fund. So, when you, when you make those adjustments, again, it's right where we, pretty much where we would anticipate. Plus, as, as noted, that in the operations fund, it's not as credible to compare it to the prior year because only about 52% of this fund is salaries, which are, you know, every two weeks. But other things, repairs on facilities and so forth, don't necessarily track evenly from, you know, one month to the other. And then you can see here, the rainy day fund, this year, 4.6 million, and last year it was 2.2, which just confirms what I had said earlier. So that I'll respond to questions if you have.
Yeah, Roger, I had the same question, or not question, but I've been, you know, watching the, the operations fund, the supplies, property, and purchase services. You know, one's, one's pretty much at budget and we have three more months to go on the purchase service, but the supplies is under budget by a fair amount. Overall, the fund is, is tracking just fine. I just wondered if you had any other comments on that? If you see those overall being on budget, or you, you see that we may have the, a little bit of a problem in that fund?
I'm not concerned about, I don't believe we have a problem in the fund. That I'm, you know, confident that there's not an issue there, which is reflected again in the total in terms of, of where the revenue's at and where the expenses are at. So to the extent that they're not particularly comparable, I'd need to look, because I hadn't looked at this earlier, but, let's see, so, yeah, one thing that's happening is, is because this, this is, probably answers the question, but in '24, we are doing that $18 million transfer from the education fund. And so that includes things like custodians, which are part of that salary, but it also includes $6 million worth of utilities, which in '23, that, they weren't paid from that fund. And so that's an example where, you know, purchaser, and that's, for example, utilities are, are coded under purchase services. And so, so you have $6 million of expense of utilities, which again, are not even every two weeks. That's reflected in '24, but was not there in '23, thus, you know, making it, it's not very valuable to compare one year to the next, in other words, because, because we made this change. Now, next year, because we'll be doing the same thing, it'll be more comparable.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have the superintendent's report with Dr. Beresford.
Thank you very much. Been a great night, lot going on. And always nice when you start out with 44 National Merit Scholars and, and man, there's a lot of brain power in this room. I always say it's kind of intimidating when I know when I walk in a room with full of kids like that, that the average IQ in the room went down just because I walked in. But our, our kids are brilliant, and if you had a chance to, to talk with many of those students, they're just really nice human beings, but also, man, their schedules that they take are incredibly difficult. And, and they have jobs and activities and they're time management experts, so couldn't be prouder of, of them. And, and their parents were, it's always nice to see the paparazzi and how proud they are of their kids, but a lot of our scholars wouldn't be where they are without their, where their parents. So it's that triangle of parents and students and, and staff that, that make the magic happen. Tonight, I am representing the Coyotes of Town Meadow Elementary. And I, oop, that's going to fall, so I'll just do a visual. And I have the Friends of Coyotes t-shirt that I was bestowed upon. And, and so the Coyotes of Town Meadow, they're led by, they're amazing leaders, Principal Amy Satawski and Assistant Principal Catherine Blake. I also want to give a big shout out to the incredible students, awesome staff, and engaged and supportive families. So I'm going to teach all of you the, the Quiet Coyote sign, which is if you put your fingers like this, and then raise them up in the air, and that's the coyote sign. And when you see that, all the kids get quiet. But if you do that at home, it doesn't work. So, but, but what a great, great school, Town Meadow and the Coyotes. I also want to throw out a big congratulations to Carmel Education Foundation on another incredibly successful Ghosts and Goblins 5K, and a shout out to Prairie Trace Elementary winning the coveted Golden Pumpkin. That's kind of a mixture of participation and percentages. Wonderful event, perfect weather. A lot of the funds, all the funds raised will support scholarships, staff, student grants, and all the special events that they sponsor, like BizTown. They do all kinds of things to inspire and support our staff and our students, and so just real thankful for the Carmel Foundation. And also, I hope everyone had a good time running the Ghosts and Goblins. A little sports report, it's getting shorter because fall sports are about done, but congratulations to the 2024 Girls Regional Cross Country Champions, the Carmel Greyhounds. Hounds placed their top five runners in the top 10 finishers, so they really just dominated the regional. And they punched their ticket to the state championship this Saturday. Also, the boys cross-countrying gave a strong performance at the regionals, and they finished runner-up to Brownsburg, so they've been chasing Brownsburg a lot this, this season. And, but the gap is closing between them, so they qualified for state as well, so go Hounds, and we'll see what happens in the cross-country state meet, which again, is the greatest sport there is in the world, is cross-country. So, I also wanted to share that Dr. O and I attended the tennis individual state championship to cheer for our number one doubles team, Senior Michael Baio and sophomore Grant Mu on Saturday afternoon. So they made it through all the rounds to the finals, they got into the finals, and unfortunately, we had, the, the match was at 1-1 in the second set, and Grant took a spill and, and really strained, just destroyed his ankle. He sprained his ankle really badly, so they had to forfeit at that point in time. So, real proud of those guys, they played some amazing tennis all year long, hate to see it finished that way. Michael is a senior, and, so we're going to miss him, but he had a wonderful career here at Carmel. And then Grant's a sophomore, so we'll get that ankle back and we'll see some good things in the future there. I also want to thank everyone who attended and presented at last week's expedition program. We held the fall gathering, we got that down, Emily's got it down to two full days, one in the fall and one in the spring. And we had an amazing time learning about HR, finance, maintenance, facilities, transportation, and mental health. Expedition, if you don't know, is a yearly program where parents and community members who want to learn about the district at a deeper level can spend two full days learning about all aspects of CCS. A big shout out again to Emily and to Colleen, who do a lot of logistics and make all that happen. For the community, just a reminder that the Carmel High School Open House will be from 11 to 2 PM this Sunday, November 3rd. And this is a great opportunity for our younger students and parents to walk the halls of our high school and get a snapshot of all Carmel High School has to offer, and we heard a lot of that tonight. So, and finally, we'll go to the bell ringer. And my bell ringer tonight's a sad one, but it's also an important one. Lori Gordon passed away this past weekend after battling, battling an illness for over a year. And she served as a special education teacher at Prairie Trace Elementary School. This was her 35th year as a teacher. In the last 15 years she's been here in Carmel Clay Schools, serving our students. What she, she works in special ed and she really is a, was just a very, very talented person who serves students who struggle with, with what I call big feelings and intense behaviors. And it really takes a special person to, to serve students with very difficult obstacles to learning. And Lori was one of those who just made a huge positive difference in the lives of many, many students and their families. She was smart, skilled, caring, yet firm when needed, but most of all, she loved her kids, especially the ones who struggled the most. In 2019, she received a Teacher of the Year nomination from one of our parents, and this is what she wrote. She wrote, "Mrs. Gordon goes above and beyond each day for her students. Our son has been working with her since the second half of kindergarten, and she is the reason he is thriving in school. She challenges him to be his best, the best version of himself while encouraging him to complete difficult tasks, all the while letting him know that she believes in him and supports him. She's very patient and kind, which has resulted in our son loving school and wanting to learn." There are so many wonderful things that we could say about Mrs. Gordon, as well as thank her for. She's an amazing individual that believes in all students that she works with and shows, and it shows in their progress. She was also recognized with, along with some teachers and therapists by a peer. In 2021, we have a thing called kudos, where you can acknowledge folks, and, and this is what it said. "These hard-working teachers and therapists work together each day to support our students with the most intense behavior needs. They are patient, compassionate, dedicated, and empathetic. These teachers and therapists are skilled at building relationships with students, teaching individualized coping skills, setting limits, problem-solving, but most importantly, helping students find confidence and success in school again. This team of individuals works with school personnel and outside agencies to ensure the whole child's needs are being met both at home and school. These teachers and therapists make a positive impact in their students' daily lives on a daily basis." And finally, her principal wrote about Lori. Lori, this is just a note. "The work you have done with your students this year has been truly transformational. You have certainly helped your students develop skills necessary to be more successful socially, emotionally, and academically. I was amazed at how far your students progressed in foundations this year, and I can't wait to see them continue to grow next year. You have done a great job adding positivity to the culture and climate of Prairie Trace." So I think it was Mother Teresa that said, "Do not think that love in order to be genuine has to be extraordinary. What we need is to love without getting tired." And I know that Lori got tired in many ways, but she never grew tired of loving her kids. And what a life well-lived. Please keep her family, her friends, and her colleagues, all that knew her, in your thoughts and prayers." And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. I wanted to announce our upcoming meetings. Our next meeting is November 11th. We have a school board workshop session. November 25th, we have our regular session. November 27th, 28th, and 29th, all the schools are closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. And then our only December meeting is December 16th for our regular session. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Katie. A second? Thank you, Greg. Meeting adjourned.